And I would like to ask you all, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Please be seated. And I would like to ask Miguel to assist us all in joining our technology meeting here. Hi, this is Miguel, everybody. He's our IT guy. Just refresh, okay? Hit Refresh and then Join. Now we are all officially in our meeting. If you could put Jesse in too. Technology, technology. Alright, well, welcome, everybody. At this time, I would like to administer the oath of office to our newly appointed Planning Commissioner, V. Jesse Smith. Jesse, if you could please come forward and stand at the podium. And raise your right hand. And repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, V. Jesse Smith.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, Jesse. And I am signing that, making it official. Welcome, welcome. Now you can sign that and make it official. Welcome, Jesse. Thank you very much. Alright, that brings us to item four on our agenda, which is Roll Call. Chair Namath.
Here.
Commissioner Avery.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Ward.
Here.
Vice Chair French is absent.
Move to, uh, excuse.
I'll second that.
Alright, all in favor of excusing Vice Chair French from this meeting? Say hi.
Aye.
Hi. Any opposed? Alright, thank you very much. That moves us on to item five on our agenda, which is a selection of the Planning Commission Chair and Vice Chair. Once a year, it is our responsibility to select a Chair and Vice Chair. That should have been done last month, but we didn't have a meeting last month. So, we are doing it at our March meeting.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would enthusiastically like to make a motion that Chair Namath continue on as our Chair.
And I would love to second that.
Wow, we are enthusiastic. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you. All in favor of Chair Namath remaining Chair Namath? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, well, thank you very much. I am honored by your support of me. That will then bring us to the selection of a Vice Chair. And I would like to make a motion that Commissioner Avery be our Vice Chair for the next year.
I would love to second that.
Alright, we have a motion and we have a second. All in favor of Commissioner Avery becoming our Vice Chair of this commission? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, well, congratulations to Commissioner Avery. You may now hop on over one seat. Into the seat of the Vice Chair. And then our IT staff over here, who is so important, is going to do some magic, magic name changing on those screens you see. Watch the magic happen. Because I can't see it, so I don't know if it's happening, but. Congratulations, Mr. Avery.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And I did want to comment. I know that in the initial agenda that went out, it did say that this meeting would not be simulcast, but it actually is. So, I hope you all wore your makeup and you're smiling pretty because it is being simulcast. Are we all up to date? Oh, very good.
Are we good on the motions? Because I didn't push the motion button.
I know, we didn't have to. Alright, that brings us to item six on our agenda, the review of our agenda.
Madam Chair, I would just like to take this opportunity to clarify that items 10D and 10E are a review of the consistency of these public works projects with the general plan and the approval of the environmental document. It's not a review of the project itself, or a project design. Also, on 10F, you're going to see there's a supplemental with some clarifying language in the update to the zoning ordinance. And that's it for the review of the agenda.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Bruce. And next on our agenda is item seven. May I get a motion to waive the full reading of resolutions?
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Ward and a second from Commissioner Avery. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we do not need to read all of the resolutions. Thank you very much. That brings us to item eight, which is public comments for our consent calendar items and any items that are not on our agenda. So if you are here to speak on our consent calendar, this month our consent calendar is the approval of our minutes from last month. Or if you are here to speak on anything that is not on our agenda, please come forward. And we are asking everybody that speaks this evening to please fill out a speaker slip. It makes it much easier for our clerk to record names and everything in her minutes. So if you are here to speak, if you forget to do it ahead of time and you still want to speak, just fill out a form for us so we can get your name proper in our records. Is there anybody here to speak on our consent calendar or anything not on our agenda this evening? Alright, that brings us to our consent calendar, which is the approval of our minutes from our meeting of January 10th, 2019.
Like to make a motion to approve?
Second.
Alright, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Yes, I will abstain due to the fact that I was not present at the meeting and I just got sworn in today.
Alright, thank you very much. So our motion passes, our minutes are approved from our last meeting. Thank you very much. And that brings us to our public hearings. Our first item is Conditional Use Amendment 18004.
And this will be presented by Justin Sauter.
Good evening, Planning Commission. The applicant Cinemark has submitted a request to establish a Type 41 ABC license for beer and wine located at the existing theater at 1475 West Rancho Vista Boulevard. The theater is located in the northwest corner of the Anlo Valley Mall parking lot, adjacent to BJ's Brew House and the Hilton Garden Inn. The area for the sale and display of alcohol is behind the cashier counter and only accounts for 1% of the total square footage of the theater. The hours of operation are between 10:00 a.m. and 1:00 a.m. The Palmdale Municipal Code requires that the Planning Commission may consider overintensification, high crime, hours of operation, and the surrounding area with regards to the approval of the CUP. There are two methods to determine overintensification. The first method is the population density method. This method determines a site to be overintensified when the ratio of the population to on-sale establishments within the census tract exceeds the ratio of the population to on-sale establishments for the entire city. This site would be considered to have an overintensification because the average is 3.74 and there are currently 21 on-sale establishments within the census tract. However, it should be noted that the tract may experience overintensification due to a lower population within the tract when compared to others in the city. This tract has a lower population because a significant portion of the land is designated as regional commercial for the Anlo Valley Mall and supporting commercial businesses. The second method to determine overintensification is the retail density method. This method determines a site to be overintensified when the number of on-sale establishments within a radius of 2,500 feet of the location in question exceeds the average of the number of on-sale establishments within a radius of 2,500 feet of a random sample of 20 on-sale establishments in the city. This site would be considered to be overintensified because the average is 9.2 and there are 24 existing on-sale establishments within this radius. However, it should be noted that the radius may experience overintensification due to the Anlo Valley Mall and supporting commercial businesses, which are a major commercial center for the entire Anlo Valley and therefore contain several bona fide restaurants with Type 41 licenses. Here are the 20 randomly selected sites for the retail density method. This site is not within a high crime area because it exhibits a crime rate that is 89% of the citywide average. The site is within Crime Reporting District 2618 and each dot on this map represents an address where a crime has occurred. Furthermore, the site exhibits only 25% of the average crime rate in the developed portions of the city. And here is a map showing those developed portions in the city. There have been 30 calls for service within the last year at this location. The majority of those calls were for fights or disgruntled individuals yelling or causing a disturbance. Only two calls were for public intoxication. The Sheriff's Department does not recommend an action for this CUP. If the business generates an increase in the number of calls for service, the Sheriff's Department may ask for a subsequent review of the CUP by the Planning Commission. And the location standards do not apply in the C4 Zone. The Planning Commission has three options tonight. Option one is to approve the CUP and find that it is exempt from environmental review. Option two is to continue the item. Option three is to deny the project and option one is recommended. That concludes my presentation and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sauter. Do the commissioners have any technical questions for staff at this time?
I do. So, a lot of times I notice that we'll talk about the, you'll talk about the hours of operation and then sometimes the alcohol is limited to inside of that. It wasn't really clear to me other than I'm assuming here that the alcohol will be served from 10:00 a.m. till 1:00 a.m. Is that correct?
That is the intent.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. In the report that we received from you, I don't know if you have the report in front of you, it's on page two on the background. I'm starting to noticing agency comments. There are a number of agencies that you've indicated. I'm assuming were contacted and they did not provide a comment or provide your comment. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Can I ask, how did you go about notifying them?
When the application is received, we have a standard checklist of different agencies who are notified in the application, but the plans are sent to those different services or school districts or other agencies.
And are any other organizations identified or notified that may be involved in alcohol regulation out in the community, you can make an attempt to notify them as well? Or they're pretty much not on the list?
I personally reached out to Pueblo East Salute to consult on this and they declined.
They declined to comment? Just one other question. The, on page 12 of the report, where you indicated there were 30 calls, 30 service calls in the area, and 20 of them happened to be disturbance calls. As I understand it, correct?
That's correct.
The... The, uh... Do you... You don't know the nature of those calls, right? You don't know what the nature of those calls were about, the disturbances, I mean.
In the report provided, there are descriptions for most of the calls and most of them were for groups of teenagers either causing a disturbance or as in some cases, just an unhappy customer that happened to be yelling and making a disturbance. So those were the different types of things that were classified as a disturbance.
Mostly teen, okay. And that ends my questions. Thank you.
Mr. Sauter, is there a, I know we saw on the display where the alcohol will be sold. Is the alcohol to be confined to that area or are patrons allowed to take it into the theaters while they're watching their movie?
The intent would be to take it into the theater while they're watching.
Okay, is it served in glass or plastic?
I do not know that.
Okay.
The applicant is here and can answer those more detailed questions.
Okay. Okay, that's all my questions. So at this time, I would like to open the public hearing on this item. And I do have a couple of speaker slips here and we did receive a write-up from the Palmdale Prevention Community Council representatives. So, it'll take a moment to read that, but I do know that those representatives are here to speak. So at this time, I would like to ask Aurora Hernandez to come forward and speak. I have two speakers. Or Rosie? Okay. Rosie Manella, you win, first place. You go.
Good evening, everyone. So, we're here representing the Prevention Community Council here in Palmdale and...
Can I stop you for a sec? Can you lift that mic up? There you go.
I know, I was just asked earlier, you need to like, project your voice. Okay. So, um... I was asked to read this document and I know it's very lengthy, but I hope that you will bear with me because it's very important. Our children is our motivation for having written it. So, as a representative of the Palmdale Prevention Community Council, we are here to express concern regarding the proposed alcohol CUP application that would allow the sale of alcohol beverages at the local Cinemark located at Anlo Valley Mall and would like to make several recommendations. The VCC is primarily concerned with the impact of alcohol, tobacco products, and other drugs for underage youth. Though we are also concerned about substance use disorder impacting adults, the urgency for us is to advocate on behalf of those who are voiceless in this decision-making process. Because the Cinemark is a venue whose patrons are largely comprised of underage youth, this alcohol CUP application is of particular concern. Similar to Chuck E. Cheese outlets and more recently the local breweries that allow the attendance of children during the sale of alcohol, we believe local policymakers are making a big mistake in allowing these types of scenarios to continue. We know that alcohol is served at family restaurants where children are allowed as patrons and social norms condones this activity. However, the AV Mall in conjunction with the businesses corridors along 10th Street West already have 55 restaurants that sell alcohol. We do really need another venue that primarily caters to children and youth and young adults to sell alcohol as well. The Calls for Service report that are part of the related staff report is not very detailed, but the corresponding staff entry states that most calls, 20 out of 30 for the applicant's sites were for the fights and disgruntled individuals yelling and causing a disturbance. If this is the cause without there being alcohol involved, as the report states, what are we to expect when you allow the sale of alcohol at this site? Then you have the problem of controlling the accessibility of alcohol products to underage youth by patrons who are of legal age but pass the beverage to underage youth. How do you control for this problematic scenario? Certainly allowing patrons of legal age to take alcohol beverages into the theaters is a recipe for this type of activity. We urge you to consider the recommendation of Palmdale staff and think about exposure to reconsider. And think about the exposure to our youth and the message of normalizing we are projecting. Our youth do not need another venue at the mall that sells alcohol. They need alcohol-free venues and more recreational facilities. However, in the Planning Commission, if the Planning Commission is convinced that the regulation, that the granting of this alcohol CUP will cause no harm to our children and we will be of benefit to the community, then we propose the following recommendations and conditions. And Aurora's gonna read that part.
Thank you very much, Ms. Manella. And Aurora Hernandez?
Good evening. My name is Aurora. So I'm going to go over the recommendations and conditions that we are proposing. The first one would be regarding the area of consumption. So we looked at the staff report and after looking at it, we can find where consumption of alcohol beverages will be allowed. We strongly recommend that the consumption of alcohol be restricted to the 325 square feet or 0.5% of gross floor area where the sale, display, and storage of alcohol beverages are presently proposed to take place. Preferably this area will be cordoned off and have visible signs disallowing entry of anyone underage. The second recommendation is that the staff responsible for the sale of alcohol be required to take an RBS training as stated in the current alcohol ordinance and ensure that at no time will alcohol be sold to minors. The third one is that no alcohol beverage be allowed into the theaters or outside the designated drinking area. The fourth is related to the method of measurement. Though overintensification has been found using both methods of measurement, we strongly recommend that the Planning Commission direct staff to use only the population density method for establishing overintensification and refrain from using the retail density method at all time in the future. As has been noted in previous years, the retail density method is not consistent and it will give you a different result every time because it depends on the businesses drawn in a ballot, which will differ every time because it's based on the chance of withdrawal. The last one is that you direct city staff to stop using a concocted formula for determining city crime rate averages and use a long-established, more accurate method utilizing all 33 crime reporting districts instead of nine. The concocted process creates a much larger threshold and though it may be more characteristic of a crime rate in the developed areas of Palmdale, the formula is nevertheless inaccurate, false, and it's stated in 10. And in the long run, it's used to create more ways to grant more alcohol CUPs. We thank you for your attention and we sincerely hope that you have given, that this is giving you cause for reflection and consideration in the matter. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hernandez. Is there anyone else here to speak on this item? I do know that the applicant is here. Is there anyone else here? Okay, then I would like to ask Mr. Steve Rawlings to please come forward. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you.
There was actually a letter written back when this first came to head as far as them asking for alcohol. I had wrote a letter, as my position as city liaison, I wrote a letter on what the Sheriff's Department's views were on it. Apparently didn't make it to the files, but the Sheriff's Department, because I don't have it in front of me, I want to make sure it's not, I don't say anything that looks bad, but we weren't on board with it. There are disturbances there. There's plenty of disturbances. It's not just disruptive patrons. There, we just look at it as a whole. It's not, it's not the safest environment. You have individuals drinking, you have young kids coming in there. It's dark. I don't know. We, like I said, if I had the letter here, I have it on my computer, I could bring it to you. It'd probably word it a lot better because I'm kind of caught off guard. It's been like almost a year since I wrote it. But, yeah, we weren't on board with it.
Thank you very much, Deputy Wolf. Okay. And anybody else here? I will look in all directions. Okay, thank you. That brings us to our applicant, Steve Rawlings. Please come forward.
Good, sorry, I just had to grab a couple of things there. Good evening. My name is Steve Rawlings. I'm here on behalf of Cinemark Theater Company. Also with me, joining me this evening is Matt Dunn. Matt is the actual National Director of the Alcohol Program for Cinemark across the United States. I did have a, I do have a little bit of material and I don't know, am I only going to get three minutes or do I get a little longer time since I'm the applicant to present? Okay. Just in general, first, it was a pleasure working with Rob and Justin. We went through a lot of issues and we concur with the staff recommendation and we do agree to all the conditions of approval that are presented to you this evening. Just a couple of major points that I'd like to point out. The movie theater industry in general is experiencing a lot of challenges right now. That number one challenge is from the home theater market. Every one of us is sitting around probably with a big flat-screen TV. We have a Netflix account, we have Amazon Prime account, we have an Amazon Fire stick, we subscribe to HBO On Demand, et cetera, et cetera. And the entire theater industry has been challenged with people, you know, staying home and not going out to the movies any longer. If you're somewhat technologically savvy, and I mean, you don't have to be very technologically savvy, just somewhat, you can actually watch the Marvel movie that was released just a couple of days ago tonight in your home. It's not that difficult. It's very illegal, but you can go to almost every college dormitory and somebody's probably watching it this evening. So the theater companies are challenged with getting people to come out to the movie theaters. A lot of people don't understand this, that the studios keep most of the ticket revenues. The first week or two, most of that goes back to them. Theater companies have to get people out and sell concessions is for the most part their revenue models. As a result of the challenge and declining populations in the movie theaters, the movie theater companies have responded and that's good for all of us that go to the movies. They have had to reinvest in themselves. They've had to invest in better items on their menu to purchase in terms of food. They've had to invest in better seating for all of us. Obviously, they've been doing the stadium seating for a long time, but now they're going to the luxury recliners. And also the other, the other part of it is, is that they've also, you know, introduced alcoholic beverages to, as an amenity. It's intended to simply be a luxury amenity. It's not intended to change the character of the movie theater at all. It's just simply that, hey, if my wife and I are going out to the movies and my wife would like to have a glass of wine like she could at home, she has the opportunity to make that purchase and enjoy it while she's watching the movie. Statistically speaking, about 10% of all adults will actually make a purchase of an alcoholic beverage, beer or wine. In this case, we're only proposing to sell beer and wine. And of that 10%, only about 10% will actually make a second purchase of an alcoholic beverage. And we can all kind of understand why that is. We typically all go to the movies, we hit the concession stand and then we walk and we go in and find our seats. I have never in my entire life left the movie after it started unless it's either because I need to use the restroom or my babysitter's calling. Otherwise, I've never gone back up for more Milk Duds, another soda, another thing of popcorn. And it's true with the alcoholic beverage. Once the movie begins, you seat there. When you finish your, your... When you finish your beverage, you're finished, and then the movie finishes. We go through great lengths, we've implemented a lot of processes to make sure that we're being very responsible. Currently in the state of California, ABC ran a pilot program starting in about two thousand and nine. After the pilot program was done, they kind of came up with some new rules and regulations which allowed most of the major theater companies to be able to offer this in the movie theaters and that happened in about two thousand and twelve. Since that time, every major movie theater company in California, Cinemark, Century, Regal, Edwards, AMC, those are the biggest ones in the state of California, have all gone through and introduced alcoholic beverages. Currently, there's over a hundred and fifty movie houses that are very similar to yours that are doing this thing. And we've all adopted very, very stringent policies in terms of how we dispense it.
Thank you very much, you've had twice the time, so I appreciate that. Yes, please give that to our clerk and she will make sure, or to Mr. Bruce and he'll hand it out to us.
And I am available for questions and thank you very much for hearing.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant at this time?
I do.
Yes.
So in regards to the ladies that spoke before you, how do you control and what measures do you take if you have a scenario where we have a couple individuals that it's dark seating, they've purchased some alcohol and now they're feeding it to their friends? How, what's your mechanism to combat that? And do you oversee that? How do you look at it? Or is there somebody monitoring the theater? Can you walk me through that?
Let me walk you through if you were coming up to make a purchase of an alcoholic beverages. You need, you need two things. First is you need a movie ticket to show that you're actually there to watch a movie and it has to be a movie that's about to start, if the movie's already over, you don't get one. And then the second thing is you need proper identification. Cinemark actually takes the ID and we scan it through a machine that reads the information off the identification. That's our attempt to, you know, take the human element out of that. It also timestamps that. We hold the data for twenty-four hours, so it timestamps it. So that means if you do come back, we know how long it's been since you've been, since you last made the purchase. So if you came in, you purchased it, and if somebody comes back in about five minutes and wants another one, we immediately alert a manager and we follow and escort that person back into the movie theater because we want to make sure that, hey, are you the person that was consuming that? Because that's, that's a pretty quick turnaround there. So we're one of the only theater companies that actually does have that device, we do that with every transaction. So you come back up and your ID is scanned. So you're, you go in, you are, it's in plastic containers, by the way, and they are clear plastic cups, different than any of the other cups that we have. Wine is in the little plastic ones and the beer and the, you know, clear plastic, so little type of cups. And then you're able to take it back into the auditorium. Our ticket takers are, you know, monitoring, you know, who's coming in there and make sure that, hey, you look like you're twenty-one now. We've already done an ID check, but it's a, it's a second way to kind of check. Then we also have designated monitors, and this is also mandated by ABC. We have a monitor that goes into each and every auditorium. This isn't somebody who just comes in and just takes a quick peek and goes out. They kind of, they walk in, they typically walk to the very front of the movie theater, turn around and look up, and they walk up to the very top of the movie theater stand, look down. They walk to the other side and do the same type of pattern, they go up and they go down and they're in there for a period of time. Some people say, well gee, the movie theater is dark. Well, next time you're at a movie and there's a daytime scene, please take the time to take a look. You can see people very, very clearly. Not all movies are really dark and dreary, there's lots of scenes that are outside. This Marvel movie that's out, it's, you know, a lot of action and there's lots of lights and explosions and a lot of the scenes take place during the daytime. So the auditoriums are, you know, you're able to see that and our person comes in and stays there. And they are looking for exactly those types of things to make sure that it's not being passed. And again, we're able to time it that, hey, you were only here a few minutes ago, what, you know, wait a minute, and we walk them back in. We certainly have not seen, again, there's, there's over one hundred and fifty from movie theater companies. Cinemark currently operates thirty-three in the state of California in this very same manner. We just haven't seen any types of major issues with the alcoholic beverages in any of the communities, either our theater chain or some of the other folks' theater chains. So it's very, very controlled and quite honestly, it's because it's typically adults and it's, well, it's always adults, but it's typically, you know, one of the two people in a party that are doing it and they only have one, you know, one beverage.
And are they limited to one alcoholic purchase? Per person?
You can purchase, you can purchase, you know, two alcoholic beverages. And, but again, we're monitoring, you know, the frequency and so on and so forth.
But it is unlimited, right? It is unlimited, right?
We actually limit three.
Oh, so you limit three, they can't purchase anymore?
Yeah, yeah, we've got a way to track you. I mean, your ID's gotten scanned and when you've made your third purchase, we're, you're, there's no more beverages that we have done. And there's some communities where we've limited it to two. Because again, it's intended and it truly has become just a luxury amenity. We're not looking to change the character whatsoever. It's a way to enhance the experience for certain adults at the movie theaters to keep them coming out to the movie theaters.
Now, in that area where it's sold, is there a bar or cocktail tables or a seating area? So it's simply a counter, just like the concession stand?
And Cinemark is different than some of the other movie theater chains. We have one designated place. You can't go to any of the other concessions and make alcoholic purchases. We do that for really control reasons because we have, in the lobby, we have multiple management staff. It's very well lit, we have an opportunity to observe the people that are in line there to make sure that we're not overselling to anybody. If you clearly look like you're, you know, intoxicated, we have a great opportunity to see. Where in a normal concession stand, you know, there's lots of people coming through. Here, there's only one reason to be in this line, and that's to make this purchase. And it gives us an opportunity to really observe, observe the people that are coming there. We can do a proper ID check and we can also look at that. In terms of training, we do go through comprehensive training, Matt trains his staff frequently. We go through the RBS training and we train our people and we make them understand that, hey, you know, you are personally liable for this, you cannot over serve. If you see somebody, just say no, and if you have a problem, just call, you know, call a manager. Because it's certainly not worth it to us. We're a very, very large company that is obviously investing in itself to try to make ourselves continue to be competitive and have a great experience. We're certainly not going to risk our core business because somebody here is wanting an extra drink. It's certainly not worth it to us.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
Yes, just one. So I understand, based on what you just stated, that it would be in the area that is cornered off from the regular sales?
Correct.
The beer and wine?
Yeah, it's kind of off to the side.
Okay, and PCC I think recommended that they wanted, they would, they would prefer it be three hundred and twenty-five square feet, I guess away from everyone else, preferably the aerobic corner. So I understand that that's what you pretty much are doing at this point, right? If we were to approve it, that's where it would be. No one else would have access to that except, well, not no one else have access, but only those who would have access to that would be purchasing just the alcohol and it would be separate from everybody else.
Correct, it's a separate line, it's a separate counter from the regular concession thing. And you make that purchase and then you can take your beverage into the auditorium. I was also going to mention, Commissioner Avery, you mentioned something about the hours. You have to kind of think of it as not sooner than and no later than, you know, one AM. Most of the movies, the latest movie that we have typically starts around ten or ten fifteen. Within about fifteen minutes after our last movie is started, we cut off, Cinemark cuts off alcohol sales. So most of the time, we're certainly not going into that there. So it's more of a no earlier than this and no later than this under any circumstances. But on a typical night, and then some nights, I mean, you take a Monday or Tuesday night when there's simply not very many people there, managers will often, you know, close concession stands because they want to, you know, send people home, you know, because they don't need the extra people there. So that's, so the hours are no later than that hour.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, important clarification. Commissioner Smith, the letter from the organization is recommending that the consumption of beverages be limited to a three hundred and twenty-five square foot area, not the sales.
Thank you. Any further questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much for your time. Is there anybody else here to speak on this item? All right, may I please get a motion to close the public hearing? So who? I have a motion this second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The public hearing on this item is now closed. Commissioner, discussion. We have a lot to read here, sorry, we're just handing off a lot of things, so if you give us a moment to take a look at them. I did not realize there was specific alcohol beverage control theater standards, so that was an eye opener for me, thank you very much.
So I'll start. I do have concerns as far as the amount of calls for service in this area. But as a patron of theaters I've been to, I have purchased a glass of wine and gone to my seat and enjoyed a very enjoyable movie with a glass of wine as a night out. I like the fact, I was unaware that they scan the ID. I like the fact that they're able to know how many beverages a person has purchased. But I would, if we decide to move forward with this, I would like to make sure that we are all well aware that if we do get any calls for service that are DUI-related, that this, their CUP comes back for review. I would like to say I too have had a glass of wine in a movie theater. I do, I do see the trend, I fully understand the business point of it, that theaters are definitely in a difficult situation in staying as a viable form of business with the way technology is today. My concern is, obviously, I think it, selling alcohol till one o'clock when your theater closes at one o'clock, and I understand it would ideally close, you would shut down before that, but I would, if this were to move ahead, I would probably request some kind of a condition requiring it to shut, stop alcohol sales prior to the close of the theater itself. And I would also, I understand that you can sell two alcoholic beverages to somebody at one time, that they could get up to, I mean, according to this, there's no condition on saying how many they could get, so I guess it would be important to limit that as well. But this is a tough one, I have to say.
Yeah, I too have enjoyed a glass of wine or a glass of beer watching a movie and I never even thought about trying to pass it over to a minor, but I can see that as a problem. Something that I'm really concerned about is our representative from the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department having, I'd like to know more actually about, I wish we could see what you had in writing there, but. I, yeah, I'm really torn on this. I think it's a great idea, I think it's a, it's a great business model to do that. But there are a lot of concerns there. Movie theaters do get dark. I see people pull, pull food out of their, women pull food out of their purses, I'm not going to say my wife does that, but. I've never, I've never seen anybody come down and say, hey, put those whatever, nuts, peanuts away, put them back in your purse or whatnot. I know that if somebody's going to go in there and hand a beer to a minor, it's going to happen, unfortunately. I'm sure the beer and wine's going to be very expensive, so you're giving away a very expensive glass of wine or beer to somebody that shouldn't be having it in the first place, but I don't know, it's a tough call for, the way I'm looking at this. I didn't think it was going to be a tough call and these two ladies make very good points. So, wow.
So, I actually don't drink, I haven't had the wine after dinner or at the movies. But I do understand exactly what your concerns are about the movie industry and I do understand why they, why there's a need for what you're proposing, wanting to do. I do have concerns about the fact that there have been twenty disturbances in the area and a lot of them have consisted with teenagers. And anytime you do have wine and beer available or accessible in those areas, teenagers sometimes have a way of getting to them. And I think that would only exacerbate, in my judgment, the problem. But I'm trying to weigh it in terms of businesses as well. And so I certainly understand why you would want to propose it. I also want to take into consideration what the Sheriff's Department, they did acknowledge it and that was one of the reasons why I was inquiring, who actually was notified, because I think that's important to see what our community agencies and leaders are looking at. So there is some ambivalence on my part as well. So I, I do understand that. This report that was just submitted, I haven't had a chance to really go over it thoroughly. And so I don't know if we want to vote on it tonight, but we need more time to review it. That's just something to consider, I thank you for adding the additional paperwork for us to review.
I don't ever want to tie a business person's hands, ever. I, unless it's absolutely necessary. I understand the disturbance calls there, none of those are alcohol related. I would like to see if we could condition this so it gives the applicant the opportunity to make a stab at the sale of the alcohol as long as we're not getting any disturbance calls. If we, we can condition in such a way that if we get X amount of disturbance calls and they're alcohol related, that based on a particular number in a timeframe, you're coming back here and we're going to revisit this. I, I think that's only fair to the applicant, I think it's fair to the consumers. I am always worried about the children in the Antelope Valley. But at the same time, we have to make sure that we are doing our due diligence too and that is to allow the applicant to continue in his business model that allows him to continue hiring individuals in the Antelope Valley and thrives here also too.
I appreciate that, Deana, I think that's a wise idea. I do agree with you. My, my fear would be if business, if.
I do agree with you, my, my fear would be if business, if if the theater business couldn't continue in this model, the other, now granted, we don't have anything but Cinemark in this town, I imagine that at some point, somebody else is gonna try and come in here, and they also would most likely want an alcohol license, and if that is the model for most theaters, I would imagine that we would be either Palmdale without a theater, which leaves much less activity for our children to participate in. Or if the other theater did get it and we had voted no on this one, that would be a detriment to this business as well. I would like to see some stricter conditions on this, I would prefer if we could put a condition in that said that alcohol sales were to stop fifteen minutes after the start of the final movie of the evening, or something to that effect, with a specific time limit in here, that would make me feel more comfortable if that's a possibility. So that might mean that we
I've, I've got some draft language, if you would care to entertain it.
Yes, I will.
Actually, I've got two conditions drafted here, so we'll start with the first one. All sales of alcoholic beverages shall, shall cease no later than fifteen minutes after the start of the last movie of the evening.
Thank you, that sounds good to me.
The other one that I've roughly drafted here, and of course, this is all with the concurrence of the Assistant City Attorney, if the business is found by the ABC, and we could add Sheriff's Department in here, to be in violation of alcoholic beverage service requirements, two or more times within a six-month period, the CUP will be scheduled for reconsideration by the Planning Commission for possible modification or revocation. Those numbers and times are purely arbitrary, and I'm just throwing it out there for discussion purposes.
Could you repeat the last one, you said two or more times?
Two or more times within a six-month period. Normally, the enforcement agency is Alcoholics Beverage Control Board, so that's my default citation authority, but if we wanted to, the Sheriff's Department, well, calls for service are different than actually having an issue. So we'd have to have a citation of some sort, that actually, somebody did something they shouldn't do, other than somebody in the parking lot was uncomfortable and made a phone call, and may or may not have been a result of the behavior of the management of their theater.
I would like to also see if we can condition, and if you all agree on this, or how you feel about this. I don't think any more than, I know, yeah, I'd like to go down to two, not three drinks, I'd, I'd like to condition this at, at two purchases.
All patrons shall be limited to a maximum of two beverages in any twenty-four hour period.
Correct. Well, then I would like to ask the applicant if those conditions would be acceptable to you. Okay. Then I would like to make a motion to adopt Resolution PC 2019014, approving conditional use permit eighteen zero zero four with the three amendments that Mr. Bruce has spoken. And find that the product is categorically exempt from environmental review.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Do any commissioners have any questions or discussion on the motion? Oh, I didn't push my button, I made a motion, sorry. I was all into this. She did, yeah. Okay. So the motion made by Chair Ameth, seconded by Commissioner Ward. Then we will call for the question, please use your voting screen to place your vote. Has everybody voted?
Technological difficulties.
Okay.
What comes up on it?
It'll, I think it'll just fade out, yeah. Look, the record show that the motion passes three to one, with Commissioner Smith voting against, and Commissioner French absent. Oh, you hadn't joined our meeting, had you? Thank you. All right, that brings us to item ten B, conditional use permit eighteen zero one five.
This honor will be presented by Mr. Alcaron.
A request to establish an amusement arcade use within an existing eleven hundred square foot tenant space located at three twenty-three East Palmdale Boulevard. The project was originally scheduled for the February Planning Commission, but prior to the hearing, staff received written confirmation from the applicant to postpone the project until March. This slide shows the existing tenant space within the shopping center approved through a site plan review. The amusement arcade is situated in the middle of the north row of tenant spaces and located within the C three zone, which requires review and approval of a CUP. The floor plan submitted shows the proposed amusement arcade gaming area, which will feature arcade machines such as fish games, which allow players to earn credits to redeem for prizes. Also, a change and soda machine, restroom, office, and two storage areas are proposed. In addition, six security cameras, a security monitoring area, and a rear door with panic hardware will be installed. The south entrance door will be the only allowed customer access to protect residents to the north from potential noise disturbance. So the option tonight is for the Planning Commission to adopt the resolution, approve in the conditional use permit, or continue this item, or deny the project. Option one is recommended. That concludes my presentation and available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alcaron. Do the commissioners have any technical questions for staff at this time?
I do, is there a maximum capacity to, how many people can be in that arcade at any time?
Correct. Only under the building code for occupancy standards, building power code.
And will that be posted somewhere, so that?
Yes, that's a standard requirement of all businesses.
Now, I noticed that there, I believe, on the plans that we saw, there were four games, four arcade games? No, five, one, two.
Well, there's a soda machine.
And each game table allows for multiple players.
Okay.
So we're looking at each player station where money is submitted to be able to play as an individual arcade game.
Okay, so this isn't an arcade like I, like a, like I'm top thinking. This is high-tech, okay. Are the majority of patrons at this arcade adult or minor? I know it says, I think it said in the conditions, thirteen and under had to be accompanied by an adult. I guess that's an applicant question, huh?
Okay.
All righty. Okay, then at this time, I would like to open the public hearing on this item, if anybody is here to speak on this item, please come forward and be sure to write your name on a speaker slip if you haven't done so already, you will have three minutes to speak. Is there anybody here to speak on this item? Is the applicant here? All right, could you please come forward? All right, and what is your name?
My name is Jonathan Crankpienta.
And you're gonna need to write that down for me. Okay. So do any commissioners have questions for the applicant?
I'm assuming this is, oh, sorry, this is more of a high-tech type of arcade, is that what we're looking at here? Two things I'm concerned about. What's your maximum capacity gonna be?
I'm not sure, it should be like forty people max.
Okay.
Cause we have this four machines with six spots each, so.
Okay, so that's, so you're looking at twenty-four active players at any given time?
They have a companion or somebody with them, then it might double it.
So obviously, we wanna be a good tenant, and we wanna make sure that we're my concern is that you're not exceeding the threshold of how many people are coming in. I think you got a great, I think you got a great business plan here, as far as what you're gonna move forward with, cause there's a lot of gamers out of there, and I like, I know they like to see each other.
Exactly.
And then, as far as the thirteen and older, how are you gonna, how are you gonna work around that? What's, what's your game plan for that?
Thirteen and older, like the age, like the way they look, like, cause I mean, you're not really gonna come in and say you're seventeen, but they'll ask for an ID, you know? If they look younger and if they say they don't have an ID, then that's automatic, just stands for disapproval.
Under thirteen, they're allowed with a parent?
Yes, of course, of course, come in with your parents and have a good time.
No, no Pac-Man?
Uh, no Pac-Man, nothing like that, it's, it's, it's a basic Pac-Man.
What is the type of game that it is?
You shoot bullets at fish that are swimming around, and it's like a big pool, so everybody's shooting, trying to get everything into the middle. And the bigger the item that's swimming by, let's say a dragon swims by, the item you hit gets you a better winning streak onto your amount that you have.
Okay, and then you win like Chuck E. Cheese tickets and you take them somewhere, how does this all work?
Uh, you can redeem what you put in the machine. So let's say you put in ten dollars in the machine you're shooting around, and you have eleven something, you can get that back.
Cash?
Yes.
Okay, so there's cash. There's a bank in the building as well, somewhere, correct? Okay. This is not like an arcade I was thinking of, so.
Oh, no.
I was thinking you were standing there with pinball or something.
Oh.
So this is typically, is your crowd typically more of an adult crowd then?
Yes.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Is there anybody else here to speak on this item? May I get a motion to close the public hearing on this item?
So moved.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? The public hearing on this item is now closed. Commissioner, discussion.
The only thing I'm concerned about is just maximum capacity. Kids are gamers, they like to be around one another, and I just, my, my concern is exceeding the threshold of how many people are allowed in your establishment at any time, so I would just caution you on making sure that those things are adhered to. And I don't know if we need to condition around that, but if the building code states that, then, then we're in good shape.
If the commission were to desire to limit the occupancy, my recommendation would be that the site be posted in compliance with the fire and building code, and violation of that could trigger reconsideration of the CUP.
I would be okay with that.
Well, I like the idea that this is breaking entertainment, into our community, for our young people, and I'm looking forward to see how it works, and I think it's something that our community will welcome, so I like the idea. Sorry it doesn't have Pac-Man, but it is what it is.
I do know that the conditions on this were, on this make sure I'm talking about the right one here. I guess my concern now that I understand a little bit more about the type of games, it's more of an adult crowd, it's more money going in to try and get more money out, sounds a little bit Vegas-esque to me. I, my concern would be the amount of money that's in the location, and the amount of the security for that would be of concern, and I do know that they have six security cameras, cashier area with security station may monitor. I would just warn you to be extra careful in, you know, I know that, I think your hours of operation were till nine PM, Monday through Sunday, so I guess just be extra careful at the close of business if you're clearing out money that has been collected that day.
I feel I need to question this business model, cause what I'm hearing sounds a lot like a slot machine. And the, the issue is whether or not this game is, the winnings are a result of pure luck or skill. And it's unclear, as I sit here, whether or not, how you win additional credits for money, how those are awarded. So if those are awarded based on probability, that's a slot machine and it would be illegal. If it's based on skill, maybe not. So I just wanna point that out, just based on what I'm hearing, it sounds a lot like a slot machine.
Okay. And look, on our screen, attachment one. Qualification for amusement device exception.
So if you look at number one, there's, there's three elements to an illegal gambling device. A is obviously qualifies, is something of value given to play the device, we're paying, so yes, so the, the issue is whether or not there's an element of hazard or chance provided the player an opportunity to receive something of value. So if it's like skee-ball, right, where you're really good shot, and you get the, the top hole, and you get ten thousand points, right, that's skill. If it's like a slot machine, you pull the lever and it just randomly comes up with an outcome, that's, that's just luck, and that's illegal. So these games can be configured in a way that it's not skill at all, and so that's my concern. I don't know the type of game that they're putting in there, so I can't say, but I just, I feel like I need to point out that part of the business model on these types of games is that they're really a slot machine.
Not having seen the game or played the game
or know the game.
Or know the game. Guaranteed I'd be bad at the game.
Having said that, if they get a land use approval for an arcade, and they put a slot machine in there, that's illegal.
Okay, so if it's approved to be a game of skill in an arcade, and Chair Ameth wandered in there to test her skill and found out it was a game of chance, then we could bring this back to the Planning Commission, or they're just in violation at that moment, correct?
Yeah, well, if it's ultimately determined to be a, a slot machine, the sheriff would be involved.
Code Jody.
And then if it's found to be, you know, a place of illegal activity, then we could bring back the CUP, yes.
Okay.
Okay, can I add something? I too thought this was Pac-Man, et cetera, and then I kind of asked a couple of questions, and found out kind of it's, you go in, and it's not for, I don't believe it's for kids, it's more for adults because of the cost factor. And I just heard the applicant, I believe, say that, you know, you can buy ten dollars worth of credits or whatnot, and then maybe you
maybe you have eleven dollars at the end, so you make a dollar, that sounds to me like that's not kind of what I thought it was. And the city attorney's bringing up an interesting thing here, apparently, is there, is there somebody that regulates this, that goes in and looks at these arcades and says, hey, this is kind of quasi-gambling, or? Staff?
We, we've been looking into that issue, and this is a fairly new industry, and the Sheriff's Department is investigating it, and is researching it, and has not come up with a solid opinion, one way or the other. And the DA's office has also not entered into it. We've not received any information from the State Gaming Commission regarding this type of a business.
I mean, I see that the Sheriff's Department has, uh, recommended the approval of the CUP, and I, I would imagine they've looked, they, they understand what this is all about. Yeah, it just seems a little hazy to me all of a sudden, from what the city attorney just said.
I assumed it was gonna be multiplayer, it was a upscale gaming thing, but I think what caught me off-guard was when you had talked about getting the money in return and, and gaining on that, so that's where in my head, I'm kinda like, I don't, I don't understand that, and I, I don't, based on what I don't know, that's where I have an issue at, is that, um, is this gambling, is this? And I don't believe we would know that until we allow the business to open.
Yep.
Play their tables out there. And I do condition twenty-three does cover that, if a problem arises as a result of business practices or operations that are detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare, the planning commission may review the CUP, and if after review deems there is sufficient evidence that the business practices or operations are detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare, then the planning commission, subsequent to a public hearing, may revoke the CUP pursuant to our municipal code. Because I, I, once again, it is a business coming to an area that doesn't have a business, um, and we don't know, there, there's that unknown.
Yeah.
I would be remiss, I believe, to deny a CUP based on an unknown such as that. But I would let the applicant know, if it is gambling and it does turn out to be that, you will not remain open, because that would be in a violation of our municipal code. With that being said, um, may I make a motion?
You may make a motion.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number PC dash two zero one nine dash zero one zero. Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Ward, and a second from Commissioner Smith. Any discussion on the motion?
Did you push it?
Okay, you got it there, okay. There. Any discussion on the motion? All right, then we shall call for the question. Everybody use your touchscreen, please. I'm tying, there. I was being too gentle. Okay, let the record show, the motion passes with four yes votes, and Commissioner French absent. All right. That will bring us to item ten C, conditional use permit eighteen zero one three.
This item will also be presented by Matthew Alfron.
Good evening. The project applicant has submitted a request to establish an amusement arcade within an existing six hundred and fifty square foot tenant space, located at the northwest corner of Palmdale Boulevard and Tenth Street East, shown in the red box. This slide shows the existing tenant space within a shopping center approved by the Los Angeles County Building and Safety Department in nineteen fifty-five. The amusement arcade is situated at the north end of the existing commercial building, and located within the CD MX zone, which requires review and approval of a CUP. The floor plan submitted shows the approved, proposed amusement arcade gaming area, which will feature arcade machines such as fish games, which allow players to earn credits to redeem for prizes. Also five security cameras, an office area for the cash register, a safe and security camera monitors, and an armed security guard are proposed. The applicant has proposed hours of operations Monday through Sunday from eight AM to ten PM. This project site is located within the crime reporting district twenty-six ten. Within the last year, there were twenty-six calls for service reported at this shopping center by the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. As shown above, District twenty-six ten has a crime rate that is six hundred and twenty-five percent of the citywide average. In addition, a site inspection conducted by staff revealed the parking lot is only illuminated by lights at the rear doors of the suites, and that no exterior parking lot lights exist to adequately ensure safety and security of users. As such, condition number nineteen is recommended to require the arcade hours be limited to daylight hours, Monday through Sunday, eight AM to eight PM, from May through August, and eight AM to six PM, September through April. Until sufficient parking lot lighting is installed per the Palmdale Municipal Code standards, thereafter, hours will be extended as originally proposed until ten PM. So the options for the planning commission are to adopt the resolution approving the conditional use permit, continue this item, and direct staff to return with additional information, or deny the project. Option one is recommended. That concludes my presentation, and available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alfron. Do the commissioners have any technical questions for staff at this time?
Could you go back two slides where it shows the layout?
Yeah, so here are the elevations of the gaming, the fish game machines.
Okay, any questions for staff at this time?
I, I believe you said that the, uh, they are, they are going to, oops, there goes my microphone back on. Um, the applicant's going to have armed, uh, armed guard, security guard, but that's not required, it's just a...
Self-imposed condition.
Beg your pardon?
It's a self-imposed condition.
It's a self-imposed condition, okay, thank you.
Okay, then I would like to open the public hearing on this item. If anybody is here to speak on this item, please come forward, you will have three minutes to speak. All right, is the applicant here? Please come forward. Hi.
My name is William Devidian, this is my mom, Arminia Sutuian, the owner of Fun Fish Games.
Hi there, welcome.
I'm here to help my mom and any language barrier.
Okay. S- s- so are these games similar to the games we're speaking of? I, I know it's a gaming table, it looks kind of like what we're thinking of, so it's a fishing arcade game mainly geared towards adults?
Yes, similar to the gentleman before me, uh, that was here present, um, but I do have Galaga and Pac-Man machines, and unlike the, uh, gentleman, uh, I, uh, do, uh, redeem prizes only, such as, uh, household prizes, uh, uh, household items, sorry, uh, like vacuum cleaners, microwaves, for the, for, for, for the prize, there's different tiers, and there's, uh, different, let's say tier one, tier two, you have keychains and like small prizes, and there's like tier two and tier three that have like bigger prizes like, uh, Xbox console, maybe like, uh, a PlayStation game system, or even a TV. So, uh, our project is a little bit different than the gentleman, uh, before me. Uh, our project is for customers to come, uh, purchase points, play, and, uh, once they have a large amount of points, uh, they get a prize.
Okay, thank you.
And I hope to see you there.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Wha- what's the need or the purpose for the armed guard? Why, 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 why is there an armed guard one?
I'm just going with the flow, if it's not necessary, then I will put an armed guard.
I think, yeah, I, I would understand that if there's gonna be a large amount of cash in there, or large, would, are the prizes on-site? Or do they come and redeem them later, or how is that?
The prizes are on-site, and that's why I would require an armed guard. That, but like I said, I, I don't know, and it's, I've been looking to a couple of pri- uh, private, uh, armed guards, and it's kind of pricey, so I'm not sure if I'm gonna be able to do that right away. I don't know if I'm gonna do it.
Yeah, cause that is not a condition that we're imposing, that was a self-imposed condition.
Uh, just one other question. Um, I'm looking at the report here, it said that a site inspection was conducted on January twenty-ninth, and it revealed that the parking lot is illuminated by lights at the rear doors of this suite, and that it does not have exterior parking light, lights adequately ensuring safety and security of your users. And I understand that there's, at some point, you're gonna be able to put lights up. Um, do you know when, at that, at, at what point you'll be able to put lights up?
Yes, uh, me and the landlord are working on that as, uh, we're going, uh, but I plan on, uh, no later than sunset, so I, I don't, uh, think that the problem with the parking lot lighting would be a problem, issue. But me and the landlord are working on that as well.
Cause of the hours. Cause of the hours of service, so you're, as far as your business hours right now, um, so April through September, um, you'll be able to move into, let me look at my... Yeah, September through April, eight to six.
Yes.
Okay, and then May through August, he'll, they'll be open till eight o'clock in the evening? Because it'll be lighter longer? Okay.
Yeah, I, I did visit your site there, and, uh, I noticed that, uh, front window's completely blacked out, you can't see anything inside. Is that the way it's gonna be when you open up?
No, sir, we're actually working on a tin, uh, today, tomorrow, we're gonna be, uh, fixing that problem.
So, okay, so it'll just be clear glass?
Yeah, there'll be no problem, it's gonna be clear glass where you could see in and out.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here to speak on this item?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second? If a motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? The public hearing on this item is now closed. Commissioner, discussion, or any additional questions? For each other. All right, having no discussion, would anybody like to make a motion on this item? I'll make a motion, I'm trying to find it, sorry. Like to make a motion to adopt resolution PC dash two zero one nine dash zero one three, and approving conditional permit zero, eighteen dash zero one three.
Mark the second.
All right. I have a motion, and I have, from Commissioner Ward, I have a second from Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, then I shall call for the question. All right, the motion passes four to zero. Thank you very much. This is the longest we've been here, I feel like we need a break. Okay, that brings us to item ten D, the complete streets project for the Palmdale Civic Center.
Madam Chair, um, Public Works Department has hired a consultant to assist with this program, so the presentation will be given by Robert Kilpatrick.
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission, my name is Rob Kilpatrick with the, uh, firm of David Evans and Associates. My address is one four two nine seven Cajon Street in Victorville. Uh, we're here this evening as, uh, as, uh, uh, Rob, uh, Bruce has pointed out, is we are a consultant for the city of Palmdale. Uh, we are very excited to be able to present this for you this evening. Uh, it's a project that we've been working on, uh, for numerous years from, and, and getting the application. The project is a complete streets project in the Civic Center area. The goal of the project is to provide, uh, multi modes of transportation, improve safety for, for both vehicular pedestrian users, and to encourage, uh, uh, you know, safe, uh, travels through, through this area. As you know, the, uh, the Civic Center area is bound by Tenth Street East to the, to the east, uh, Avenue Q nine to the north, uh, uh, Ninth Street East to the west, and Avenue Q twelve to the south. So it's basically the area where the Course and Connection projects located, and also where the senior center, so, uh, just, just to the east of us here, so, uh, we're real excited that we had a, an opportunity to, uh, submit an application on behalf of the city of Palmdale. Uh, we've submitted a, what was called an active transportation program application. It's a grant that's administered by the state of California, includes sometimes state and federal funding. Uh, active transportation, uh, uh, program involves, again, uh, the encouragement of projects that would, would, would allow for uh, encouragement of active transportation, which is pedestrians, and also transit, and other modes of transportation. City staff had identified this project as, again, with the development of the Course and Connection project, it's an area that we're trying to encourage a lot more pedestrian activity. So the goal was looking at those streets and determining what kind of safe, you know, what kind of safety improvements we can do. Uh, we were very fortunate that the, uh, the application was submitted, and it was approved by Caltrans, or by actually Metro, through SB one augmentation funding. So the city of Palmdale did receive, uh, funding for this project, and, uh, we're pretty excited for, for this project to move forward. Uh, where we are right now with the project is the, uh, project approval and environmental, uh, document phase of the project that involve the preliminary engineering, uh, which we prepared preliminary plans, and the environmental approval. Uh, where we, where we are right now is, uh, we've circulated the mitigate neglect declaration, and we're here for this evening for the approval of that document. And then after approval of that document, the city, the city has received funding, so once the, uh, the environmental document is approved, then, uh, they will move forward and get the allocation through Caltrans, the CTC, Caltrans Transportation Commission for the, the funding of the design and construction of this project. Again, it's just a quick overview of the project, it's, uh, this was actually the preliminary plan that was included in, in the application. Uh, the project includes the, uh, traffic calming devices, which involve, uh, on Tenth Street East, uh, four roundabouts, which are compact roundabouts at, uh, Avenue Q nine, the two intersections of Q twelve, as you know, is a dog leg in that, that intersection, and at the drive, main driveway for Course and Connection. Uh, those roundabouts then would allow for, for circular circulation. The main reason for the roundabouts is also was proposed as a median in Tenth Street East, so keep vehicles using the driveways, they have the ability to limit the left, left turns, which improves traffic safety, and would then, uh, vehicles would make you a U-turn, or make a, you know, in the roundabout. The other key item around about is that's where the pedestrian crossings will be, is cause you know with a roundabout, you're slowing down traffic, and so you're looking at pedestrian activity. Uh, so as part of the preliminary work we did was, we prepared preliminary geometric plans, uh, a preliminary utility plan, and conceptional landscape plans. The project, uh, again, has got, been, been around since nineteen, since twenty seventeen, when we did the original application. Again, that application was, uh, approved by, by Caltrans. Uh, basically, by where we are tonight, city council's already approved the grant funding, and has directed staff to proceed with the project, so in that respect, again, that's why, um, uh, Bruce, Rob Bruce pointed out that, well, it's before you tonight is the approval of the environmental document, not the specific approval for the project itself. However, what also is part of that approval process, or part of the, uh, review process, uh, we've held numerous stakeholder meetings, uh, with, uh, with county sta- county staff, the, uh, Transit Authority, the County of Los Angeles Fire Department, and Palmdale Water District. Those were permanent for input on the designs, to make sure that we had, uh, had their involvement, to make sure the designs, that they're, they're... Those were requirement for input on the designs to make sure that we had uh had their involvement, to make sure the designs that their, their requirements. Also, public meetings have been held on this project. We did hold public workshops during the ATP application process back in tw- two thousand, twenty seventeen. We also had a public meeting on January ninth tw- twenty nineteen and then we're here this evening uh for the final public meeting. The environmental approval involved the initial study mitigating declaration, declaration uh and that for circulation for, for comment. That document was distributed on January seventeenth, twenty nineteen. Uh we, public comments were due on February fifteenth, twenty nineteen. Uh we only received a couple of comments from a, a few of the agencies. Uh and where we are tonight is the uh final mitigation declaration document was prepared dated March fourth after the public comment period. And we're here for, again, this evening for the formal approval of that document. I do wanna point out there were a couple key mitigation measures for this project. One was in terms of air quality. Uh we've pulled out a couple of items. I'm not gonna read these. Uh there was some mitigation measures dealing with dust control and another one with nuisance. Again, uh we wanna make sure that during construction, that there's no, no nuisances every and uh disruption of uh businesses and areas. Another uh key item was cultural resources. We did do consultations with the uh, the tribes and that's now a state requirement to do that. And again, we have uh your typical mitigation measures that deal with uh if we find human remains or if we find uh any artifacts that we have to do proper notifications. Do you wanna boy again point out that tonight you're looking at general plan conformity? Uh the key is the project is consistent with the city's, uh Palmdale's general plan cuz it conforms with the goals and objectives of the general plan. And again, there's the two key items in there. So before you this evening, we have uh your options are to adopt or approve the uh complete city's initial study and adopt for adoption of the mitigated declaration. Uh continue the item or deny the uh, the approval of the environmental document. Option one is recommended. So I thank you. I'm here for any technical questions you may have. We also have our environmental consultant, Unice Bagh on with the Chambers Group, who prepared the initial study and the environmental documents. And again, staff for your consideration for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kilpatrick. Do the commissioners have any technical questions for staff at this time or the?
I just have one question. What, and it's not related to the, the mitigation measures. Just the SB one money. So anytime you get SB one money, you're um you're subject to going through the process with Cal, Caltrans is a component to the, to the actual plans?
Yeah, uh when you're dealing with uh state and federal funds, uh we have Caltrans oversight through local assistance. So the good news is the city uh staff is, will be in charge of reviewing the plans. But again, the, before project moves forward to construction, we have to get formal approval from Caltrans. But again, it's more of an oversight process. They don't actually get involved in the details of the design.
So, so they caught my attention. What's a rapid flashing beacon?
Does it say rabbit? Oh, rapid.
There's a lot of rabbits.
Yeah, a lot of rabbits. A rapid reflective rabbit. Yeah, you got me doing it. Rapid reflective rectangular reflective beacon is a beacon where it's actuated. And you probably seen in some areas where you get these very uh like strobes, yellow strobes. So the idea is we, the pedestrian will press that button and will let them, let the vehicle know there's uh pedestrian in the crosswalk. So it's like a lighted, a lighted crosswalk. It's like a warning light for the crosswalks.
Class two bike lanes that, that's kinda offset a little bit from the street. So you're not right next to the cars when you're riding your bikes?
Yeah, we're doing buff, what we call buffered bike lanes in a lot of the places, but uh what happened though during the design though, the fire department had a lot of input on what we do. So some of the, some of the design features got tweaked a little bit cuz of the fire department requirements. But we are putting bike lanes. There will be bike lanes around the perimeter of the, of the project. Every street will have a bike lane. And again, uh the rapid reflective beacons are where the cross, some of the key crosswalks primarily on Tenth Street East because of the speeds. And again, you, even the crosswalks are right before the, uh the roundabouts cuz people are slowing down going the roundabouts. Uh you'll still have that other mechanism where pedestrian will be detected by virtue of them pressing a button and, and the lights coming on.
And the roundabouts, only because I had the experience with Caltrans when they put the um roundabout, our first roundabout out there on one thirty eight.
Forty, forty seventh, yes.
Yeah. Um the fire truck get around the roundabout?
Yes, and actually if you're looking, I think you, these are, are what we call compact modern roundabouts. And the, the item after this one is a more modern, larger modern roundabout.
Right.
You'll notice that there's aprons. Yeah, exactly. So we looked at the training templates to make sure that, that fire, fire engines and buses
Okay.
Can actually do it, which is why again, turns to stakeholder meetings, we made sure we had meetings with the fire department and uh ABTA cuz we wanted to make sure that they were on board. We don't wanna do is go into final design and find out we have problems. So during the preliminary engineering phase, we, we knew it was very important to meet with those two agencies. Also with the water district because we knew there was issues with water lines, so we met with them to make sure that we know what their requirements are. So we can actively look at the cost of the, the relocation of water facilities.
Okay, I do have a question that um on this, it says to approve the acquisition of a right of way is consistent with the applicable goals, et cetera. Um in the document on, it says no right of way acquisition is anticipated for this project, so.
Yeah, there is no right of way, but again, it's the standard wording. So again, you're proving that if, if we did, you know, redo that, we, we, we were covered there. But again, there is no right of way acquisition. We're very, we were very, it was something again, as, as a, as a design engineer, I wanna make sure that we could do this project without right of way acquisition, which would minimize disruption of any of the, the properties.
Okay, and I realize that we are not approving the design of this. Um when does that get finalized? And who has input into that?
Well, that, that's what, we've already had the public meetings for input. Unfortunately, not too, too many people attended the meetings. It was very light, but uh we did do noticing of all the public meetings. Uh again, we even had a wor- a lot of workshops back in twenty seventeen. So your approval.
About the design?
Yep. And again, with the council approving the um, the grant, it was part of the grant application was the proposal. So it, after tonight, we will be moving forward with the, with, upon the sit, next step will be the staff to solicit, solicit proposals for the final engineering to move forward with the project.
Okay, thank you. Alright, then I would like to open the public hearing on this item. If there's anybody here to speak on this item, please come forward and state your name. You will have three minutes to speak. Seeing no one?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
I have a motion is second. All in favor? Any opposed? Alright, the public hearing on this item is now closed. Alright, Commissioner discussion.
I just wanna say it's a beautiful area there. I'm really looking forward to riding my bike over there away from the cars. And hopefully that's kind of the movement of the city of Palmdale, that to have more beautiful areas like that for us to enjoy.
Alright.
Well designed. I love the layout. I love the, the strobe lights. I've, I've been, I've worked around many intersections with those and I know the impact that they have on the uh traveling public. Um they are a great warning system. Um I like that you've incorporated uh the roundabouts and uh SB monies there to help further this along, so I'm, I'm grateful for that.
Yeah, I like the uh the bike lanes. I, I do have concerns about the roundabout, I'll be honest with you. Uh I get the fact that this is a new thing that we're embarking upon. The roundabouts do scare me a little bit, but uh I um, I like what you've done and the bike, the bike lanes actually will help us get more exercise, so. Nice job.
Well, I'm gonna second what Commissioner Smith said. Roundabouts make me nervous. Um but I guess I gotta get used to that. They seem to be the way when we got back from our planning commission academy roundabouts and pedestrian world seemed to be the way. The other thing that was of concern to me a little bit, and this is all design stuff and I'm just voicing my opinion because I can. Um the rear end parking. So you pull forward. It's like parallel parking, which I'm not good at either, but you pull in and you back into the space, which makes sense when you're leaving. But I'm just envisioning a little bit of a cluster of par- cars as people are trying to back into spaces. My other big, big concern is the no left turn into the Palmdale Playhouse. Um being a patron of the Playhouse and being a parent of a child who went to the Playhouse for many, many classes. I see that as actually increasing traffic in the area because people are gonna have to go down further past the Playhouse if they're coming uh south on Tenth Street East and do the roundabout at uh Q eleven and come back around and pull into the parking lot. And also for the new swimming pool. So I'm not so sure that this is going to reduce um emissions in our community. But I also understand that I have no say in the design, so. That being said, I do think that that is something that um just be aware of, that a lot of people go to our Playhouse, particularly like on Wednesday nights, there's a lot of traffic in and out of there. And if they can only come in one way easily, I, I could see that as actually adding more congestion and more um a less efficient movement, which is a actual circulation goal in our community. So I think that kind of violates that. Anyway.
I'd like to make a motion. There's no further discussion. I move to approve the Palmdale Civic Center Complete Streets Project Initial Study with mitigated negative declaration. Finding that the project would have, excuse me, would not have potentially significant impacts with the incorporation of mitigation measures and finding that the project and acquisition of right of way is consistent with applicable goals, objectives and policies of the city of Palmdale general plan.
I will second that.
That was a long one.
Alright, I have a motion by Commissioner Avery and a second by Commissioner Ward. Is there any discussion on the motion? Alright, then we shall call for the question. Alright, that passes with four yes votes. Thank you very much. That brings us to item ten E.
This item will be presented by Justin Sauter.
Hello again. So the city of Palmdale Public Works Department is proposing to convert an existing two-way stop intersection to a roundabout layout as an effort to improve intersection flow on a higher speed arterial roadway. The Insurance Institute for Highway Safety confirms that roundabouts are safer for both cars and pedestrians than traffic signals and stop signs, improve traffic flow and are overall better for the environment. The project is located at the intersection of Avenue S eight and Fortieth Street East, as seen here. And this is a configuration of what the roundabout will look like. This shows going north, south, east and westbound to that intersection. See it's a two-way stop. The project consists of right of way acquisition of thirteen parcels shown here. The Avenue S eight and Fortieth Street Roundabout Project Right of Way Acquisition is consistent with the general plan, goals, objectives and policies such as goal C one, which is to establish and maintain and enhance a system of streets and highways which will provide for the safe and efficient movement of people and goods throughout the planning area. This project would promote a safer and more efficient movement of vehicular, pedestrian and bike traffic through the intersection. Um and the proposed roundabout would allow all roadway users to complete left turns without stopping traffic flow and minimize the frequency of rear end and side swipe collisions. The project includes mitigation measures for impacts to biology, which I'll discuss on the next slide. All other topics analyzed within the initial study have a less than significant or no impact. Some of the mitigation measures include plant surveys during the blooming season, installation of protective fencing around plants during construction and potentially an on or an off-site re-vegetation and restoration plan to be prepared by a qualified restoration ecologist. Planning commission has three options tonight. Option one is to approve the roundup, the roundabout project initial study with mitigated negative declaration. Option two is to continue the item. Option three is to deny the project. Option one is recommended. That concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sauter. Do the commissioners have any questions for staff at this time?
So the purpose of this is to, is, was to try to um control traffic, to make sure traffic was not, not becoming a major issue? That's the reason?
To improve the traffic flow.
Have there been histories of accidents in that area, to your knowledge?
The city engineers here could answer the more technical questions.
Okay. That's, those are all the questions I have to say.
Welcome, Mr. PDA.
Chair, member of the commission, yes, the answer is yes. We have a history of accidents. And the choice that we got is a four-way stop, traffic signal, but for the grant that we were applying, the only thing that will allow us to obtain funding to resolve the issues was to install a roundabout. Originally, we wanted to put a traffic signal, but that was not qualified for the grant. So the next step was to do, a roundabout was very efficient. Uh as traffic signal, you had to pay for the lighting and uh you have yellow and, and red, so you had to stop. A roundabout, you, you go to the intersection if it's lower, it's safer and actually you can move more cars through the, through the intersection. Now, this is a one-lane roundabout, it's easy, not too scary like the one.
Will you provide us with training on how to drive through these things?
Videos and everything and because it's one-lane roundabout, it was designed in the future when the corners, the northeast and southwest corner develop, there we conditioned to make a two-lane roundabout. So, but I, I know the question was, is because it's accident history, yes.
Thank you.
Alright, does anybody else have questions for our traffic engineer? Alright. Then I would like to open the public hearing on this item. If anybody is here to speak on this item, please come forward and state your name. You will have three minutes to speak and there will be a timer box on the side there.
My name is Darian Green and I've been a um resident here for twenty-five years and I live east, north, east of S eight and Fortieth. I go through that intersection about six times a day. Um my concern is, is that what was the benefit of a roundabout? And to add something to it, it's a four-way stop sign now, for the last six, nine months, not a two-way stop sign. Um and my concern is, is those kids that walk from the elementary school on Forty Fifth Street to the housing tr- track on the other side of Fortieth, okay? How is it gonna be safe for seven, eight, nine-year-olds crossing that street, especially around three o'clock when people are coming up from the hill? To, in a roundabout, okay, versus a four-way stop sign that's there right now? And if there's a traffic flow situation, why aren't we putting a light versus a roundabout, okay? The second thing is when they installed the four-way sign, for months, people were flashing through it because, you know, forty years, it's never been there. All of a sudden, they put up a four-way stop sign. But there was no flashing lights, no solar blinking things to tell people, give them a warning before they got there. So the traffic going north and south, they're running off of Palmdale or running off of S at forty miles an hour, fifty miles an hour, and they were bu- blowing through that stop sign, okay, like it wasn't even there. So my concern is the traffic flow going north and south and the kids walking from Forty Fifth Street at somewhere around the school over to the housing track on the west side of Fortieth Street. Um that's my major concerns there. Um that's it.
Alright, thank you very much. Is there anybody else here to speak on this item? If so, please come forward and state your name and you'll have three minutes to speak.
My name's Milo. I was just uh concerned about, I'm a property owner there, uh and I owned land along that um proposed plan that you guys have and I basically just wanted to know how you guys would go about uh acquiring that property.
Okay, we'll answer that when the public hearing closes. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Harry. Uh I've got a question on about uh Fortieth is a major through affair through the city of Palmdale. You got T on one side, which is a major through affair, and you've got uh Parabola from Highway on the other side. And you've got a major through affair there and they all go to the water park and to the school and the neighborhoods. You got two big areas there that haven't been developed yet. And you're still gonna bring the four lanes on each side down to the two lanes, which is just gonna make a big mess. And you're gonna have to be redoing this sometime in the future, so you And you're going to have to redoing this sometime in the future, so you're going to have to respend your money all over again. Why not do it right in the first time and put four lanes in there on both sides? Put an underpass underneath the railroad tracks, because you're going to be backing up onto those railroad tracks. Somebody's going to get killed. You've got to take that into account, and you're not doing that by doing this. All you're looking at is what you've got right now, two lanes to two lanes and one big mess. We'll have the same problem we got over there on Palmdale Boulevard and Forty-seventh and Fiftieth. Only in a smaller version, but you're still going to have the same backup. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else here to speak on this item? All right. May I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The public hearing on this item is now closed. Commissioner, discussion?
So I did want to hear from Rob regarding the acquisition of the properties involved. I know we're not here.
Well, I was going to punt to the city engineer, Bill Padilla. He can answer the technical questions on the process for land acquisition for the right-of-way.
Mr. Chairman and members of the planning commission, Mr. Padilla. To answer the question related to the properties, properties owners will be notified and then entered into negotiations, and the city will always pay a fair market value. And they have to have an agreement between the city and the owners. So basically, we have to go by law. We cannot take over the land, so to be properly notified. Most of the land that we are acquiring, if they were to develop that property, because it's not a full takes, they had to provide, they had to dedicate it to the city in the future. So basically, whatever we're buying actually is a benefit to them, because we'll be paying for the land that if they were to be developed right now, they have to put improvements. So actually, they're saving right now. But to answer directly the question is, they'll be properly compensated for that market value of that property.
Okay, so property owners will receive fair market value, will receive notification from the city. And if this were not to happen right now, and you were to develop that property in the future, most likely you would have a significant out-of-pocket expense to do the improvements that would be needed to, for sewers and sidewalks, et cetera. Is that correct?
Correct. And another point is, we cannot talk to the property owners until the environmental studies are completed. That's why sometimes the owners get ahead of the game, because they know.
So yeah, it does, you've heard about this, but because the environmental study hasn't been done, the city is not allowed to make any offer or anything to you. So it sounds a little bit sneaky perhaps backwards, but that's the way the government has us do it. So, thank you very much. And what about the railroad track? I know that we had, I believe we received a letter from who was it? Department of Transportation that, was that the one that talked about the railroad track? No. It was the Public Utilities Commission. But how will you, is there a plan to mitigate that? How are you going to address that concern?
If the four-way stop right now is not backing up to the railroad tracks, when we install the roundabout, there's no way that we're going to back up all the way to the railroad tracks. Now, because it's so efficient, better than a traffic signal. A traffic signal is less efficient. If you go up to a traffic signal right now, there's more chances of backing up to the railroad tracks.
Because you'd have a longer line of cars. This way, ideally, the cars continue to flow through there.
Especially the advantage that we have here right now is that Avenue S eight is not heavily traveled. The traffic volumes are very low. Actually, to the west of Fortieth Street East is, is, there's not much traffic flow. So most of the traffic is north-south. That's why the four-way stop is not working as well. We should, because they don't see cars on the east or the west. It's wide open. And people just go bye-bye. Unless the sheriff is around there, they will give a ticket, right? But that's why it happens. People can see in all directions at that intersection, except in the northeast corner, because northwest corner is a house. So when it's southbound, it's a bit more difficult, but somebody going northbound, they have free visibility to not stop. So maybe she's seen that behavior. It's not acceptable. But a roundabout is their force to slow down, because they come out with a curvature, and that's specifically designed for that. Usually, they're designed for twenty-five to twenty miles an hour, and they have to slow down. So that's as far as the advantage they have in a roundabout now. The children, as you're mentioning, we work with the school district. And we should, we don't promote the school students to go through the main arteries. If they are having too many kids going through there, we do, we work with them. There's a threshold, so many students. The school district had to put a crossing guard right there.
So if there is a large student population crossing through there, then the city will work with the school district to get a crossing guard for the city.
They will, we work with them at the beginning of the school year, and they'll, they'll tell us, you know, kids will travel from this place to this other place, and we, one school start with the account, and they had to put some crossing guards. A roundabout is more difficult than a traffic signal, of course, more challenging for the pedestrians. But because it's lower speed, usually a pedestrian will be crossing behind the first car. So of the roundabout. The roundabout to slow down or yield, and there's like a pedestrian crossing behind the first car approaching the intersection. It's kind of weird, because we're not used to it.
Right, it's very weird. You see, I'm getting nervous already, just thinking about.
Now, while we put a traffic signal, like I mentioned before, a traffic signal would not qualify for a grant. Now, this was not the highest priority for a traffic signal in the city, but could have been, was a high priority because of the grant. Putting a roundabout. So we took advantage of the funding to put a-
Because the funding's available, and this will help with the accident numbers, hopefully, because it'll slow them down.
A roundabout will have less accidents than a traffic signal in the future.
Is there any way to, if it turns out that there is, maybe this isn't the appropriate place to ask, but if you find out that, thinking ahead, because we just reviewed a project, you know, where they've got the flashing lights. So if we end up in a scenario where you do have a lot of children in that area, would there be the possibility that the city would go back and, and possibly look at putting the flashing signal lights if a child, we could have a mechanism where they could trigger a light that would start the flashing so that the kids could walk across safely?
We look at different options that we have. Depends on the issue that we may have. We can have advanced flashing beacon, they can seize a crossing. But it depends on the, on the type of action that we have. We're going to look closely and how to solve the problem, because we may have different tools to do it. And so I think that might answer some of the issues with the non-stopping, the four-stop, schools, the traffic signal, and the properties.
I like the roundabout. I was there this evening and got stopped by the train. And had to make a right and stop, and turn around and stop, and go to the next stop sign and to turn around. It took me three turns to get turned around there.
The other comment about we start, if we construct it and we turn out and build it again, no, it was designed. The diameter was designed, so in the future, we went, need to make a two-lane roundabout in two directions, like, let's say, to make Forty Street East a four-lane roadway. It's been designed in the future, they can expand through the exterior. So they, they have to move to the exterior. And any developer had to develop from the center line to the property line, so it's not throwaway.
Okay, so we are designing it and utilizing any developer funds in the future to make it so that it will be cohesive, not having to be ripped up and redone.
It'd be a two-lane roundabout.
It would be a two-lane roundabout, usually. Okay, without ripping out the one-lane roundabout.
Yeah. It would have been too small, I mean, we did a design with a small roundabout for one lane in the wrong location. We had to move it to the east a little bit. Then we had to do the whole thing all over. But it was, we look in the future, so we'll have to throw away money.
That's good planning.
So you were trying to look, okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Padilla. Any further discussion on the item?
No. I would like to make a motion to approve Avenue S eight and Fortieth Street East Roundabout Project Initial Study with a mitigated negative declaration and find that the project would not potentially, would not have potentially significant impacts with the incorporation of mitigation measures and find that the project and the acquisition of right-of-way is consistent with applicable goals, objectives, and the policies of the City of Palmdale General Plan.
And I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Ward and a second from Commissioner Avery. Any discussion on the motion? All right, then we shall call for the question. Using our touch screen. All right, the motion passes four to zero with Commissioner French absent. That brings us to item ten F, zoning ordinance amendment nineteen zero zero one.
The highlight of the evening was presented by Megan Taggart.
We're still awake, by the way.
Good evening, everyone. The proposed general pla, excuse me, general plan, the proposed zoning ordinance amendment is a request to amend various sections of the code in order to streamline how the code is used to eliminate ambiguity and clarify the code and to ensure consistency with state law, other sections of the code, and the-
Excuse me, could you please go outside and speak? Excuse me, could you please go outside of the doors to conduct your conversation? Thank you. Sorry, Megan.
Sorry, I was just carrying on. The zoning code has not been comprehensively updated since nineteen ninety-four. As a result, the code contains issues with organization, consistency, and flow, which make finding and understanding requirements rather difficult for staff and residents. As discussed in the upcoming slides, major components of the amendment include consolidating definitions and removing ambiguities, creating a land use matrix, streamlining approval of minor applications, and ensuring consistency with the general plan. Over time, cumulative amendments to the code have resulted in a document that has internal inconsistencies and duplicative provisions. In addition, the code has not been kept up to date with evolving uses, and development in new businesses have entered into a marketplace since the code was last comprehensively updated, and our code does not allow for those types of uses. And as a result, the code can be difficult to interpret and is often circ, circuit, I can't say it right now. Circuits, it's been a long day. Definitions are also scattered throughout the zoning code rather than being placed within one section of the code. And so definitions for signs, alcoholic beverages establishments, hazardous waste facilities, and other uses are proposed to be moved to the existing definition section. I don't expect you to be able to read any of this, but this is just an example of what the land use matrix looks like. One of the larger changes obviously is creation of this land use matrix, and there's actually two of them. One which is used for residential agricultural zones and one which is for all the rest of the zones. The two matrices will simplify and streamline staff time spent reviewing the code to determine allowable uses and enhance the user friendliness for residents, developers, and future business owners. The amendment also proposes to streamline temporary use and special event permit processes by omitting the required findings of approval, so the staff can approve these applications over the counter. The applications currently require additional staff time to draft letters so that we can make these findings for temporary uses and special events. And with the revisions, the permits will be allowed or approved over the counter as long as they meet the requirements of the municipal code and as long as they meet the requirements of the applications for those permits. The amendment will also elongate timeframes, timeframes for certain temporary uses. The California Government Code requires consistency between the city's general plan and the zoning ordinance. Currently, the zoning code allows a higher density within the, than the general plan within the medium residential, which is the R two zone. And in order to remedy the inconsistency, the amendment proposes just to remove that language from the code and rely solely on the general plan for density. So the planning commission has several options for this. Oh, I would like to say, you did receive a memo. Seems like forever ago. On the dice, there were a couple of changes, last-minute changes to the exhibit, which provided some additional clarity and also included museum uses as an allowable use within the C three, C two, no, C three, C four, and public facility zone. Also, there was a reproographical error in your staff report, so the three pages that are used for the residential agricultural matrix were duplicated. And then with that, you have several options. The first would be to adopt the draft resolution as amended. And find the project is exempt from buying and rental review. The second would be to continue the item. And the third would be to deny, and option one is recommended. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Ms. Taggart. Do any commissioners have questions for staff at this time? I did notice that the, mainly the Christmas tree and pumpkin lot timeframe was expanded. Has, has there been a request? And then once I looked at it, I went, oh, they really didn't have a lot of time anyway, so I do understand it.
Yes, the problem was, usually those locations are used for both pumpkin sales and Christmas tree sales. So it was proving rather difficult for those businesses to tear down for a few days and then set back up for a few days, so just made more sense to elongate those periods.
Okay, very good. And, all right. I would like to open the public hearing on this item. If anybody is here to speak on this item, please come forward and state your name, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Okay, I will move to close the public hearing.
I will second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The public hearing on this item is now closed. After all your hard work, that's it, man. I actually went through this page by page, and I opened up my massive general, you know, zoning ordinance book, and I compared, and I'm thinking that we might be able to buy smaller binders for our zoning ordinance after this, because this is huge. This is a big, big job, big improvement from everything I could see. Like I said, I was interested to find out, when I saw, wait, why are we only focusing on these tiny changes here, the trees and stuff? I thought, what are they doing? Are they sneaking something in? But it totally makes sense. So I was very, very pleased with this. It's very thorough. And it, it will save lots of paper when you print this for us, and I, I think it will make Skip's life a little bit easier as well, so. I was really impressed with it. I, I think it's a well-deserved and necessary improvement to our zoning ordinance.
I think the public will find it easier to comprehend, not so ambiguous. So, thank you. I know this took a lot of time and effort, and you guys did an outstanding job on this.
All right, any further discussion?
And with that, I would like to make a motion to adopt resolution PC dash two zero one nine dash zero zero one, recommending that the city council approve Z O A one nine dash zero zero one and find that the project is a- Oh, I'm sorry, as amended, thank you. As amended.
I will second that.
You will push your buttons, sure. All right. We have a motion from Commissioner Ward and a second from Commissioner Avery. Any discussion on the motion? All right, then we shall call for the question using our fancy touchscreen. And the motion passes four to zero with Commissioner French absent. Okay, that was a lot of stuff, guys. That brings us to item eleven, Staff Communications.
Madam Chair, before you is also a memo listing the items that we believe will be coming forward in the next meeting. Another meaty meeting for you, and more zoning code changes to come, hopefully to help spur our multifamily development. And this is exterior roof ladders. And, okay, so the zone change for the multifamily development is probably another month away. So we do have several items coming forward. Also, we are receiving an increase in the- So we, we do have several items coming forward. Also, we are receiving an increase in the number of applications coming forward and the number of applications getting deemed complete. And some pretty meaty projects that are in your short-term future. Probably while a couple of our senior planners are enjoying their maternity leave. So it's gonna be a very interesting summer for the remaining staff members.
Alright, Mr. Doran, do you have any communications?
Nothing this evening.
Alright, thank you very much. That brings us to item twelve, planning commission communications. I would like to once again thank staff for this big fat packet. We have never had anything quite like this, so. Thank you, thank you. This, I know this was a lot of work. There are a lot of big things in here. And thank you for your patience with us and answering all of our questions. I would also like to say that I had a very nice time learning at the Planning Commissioners Academy last week in Long Beach on the Queen Mary. It's the fourth time I have attended that and I am very grateful that the city's able to send us to meet other planning commissioners from throughout the state and to learn a few things. I would also like to welcome Commissioner V. Jesse Smith to our commission. You did a bang-up job. Did you get your present?
Yes, I did. It's so cool. I appreciate it.
Okay. And I did have one question. Do we have a drone policy? Couple of people have asked me if we have a policy for drones flying over our city. Are we working on that or?
No, no, we're not.
Well, get to work, dude. No, just kidding.
For the most part, we're preempted by federal law.
By federal law?
To, we can't really regulate airspace.
Can't regulate airspace at all, so, okay.
Where they land, that's a different story. What goes up must come down.
We can regulate where they end up, but alright, thank you. Any other commissioner communications?
Yes, just wanted to say that the training I had last week with my colleague here was really off the chain. I enjoyed it. I learned a lot. I was happy to be trained also by my dear friend, city attorney here, on the Brown Act, so, the Brown Act, rather. And tonight was an experience, so I want to thank everybody for coming out. It's always good to have community participation and citizen involvement. And it's been something of a rewarding experience, so I'm looking forward to working with the community and working with you guys to do some awesome work in the city of Palmdale. Thank you.
Thank you. I, oh, also, can you give us an update on the general plan advisory committee? What's happening there, please?
The application period for the G-PAC has been extended to close of business Monday is the, yeah, Monday. So we're still receiving applications and we're hoping to get to the city council in May with nominations.
Alright, thank you very much. Alright, then with that, I shall adjourn our meeting until Thursday, April eleventh at seven PM. Thank you all very much for coming and you drive safely. And this is really late for us.